Let the call meeting to order for the Daniel Town Council meeting for Monday, November 5th, 2018. On the agenda, if you'd always like to have, as I have number one, any public comments concerning any issue that's not on the agenda this evening? If anyone would like to take that. Okay.
Pam Skinner. I just would like the webpage, the maps that are on the webpage have last been updated in 2008. Could we update those by any chance? They have people on the lots that, they've been gone for quite a few years.
Which specific, just, I mean-
All of them. There's four of them on there.
General Town maps is what you're saying?
The map section, yeah. The maps of Daniel, the town of Daniel. There's one on that one, and I don't, it doesn't have a date on it, but I remember. And then there's two that were updated in '08. One was the commercial zone and that. That's also-
What we're responsible for is what you're referring to now with some of the county stuff that may or may not-
I don't think it's county. It's on the Daniel Town website.
Ryan, do you know anything about that? Because I know Kim, before she left, had mentioned that she was updating maps.
So we've updated maps on the GIS. We haven't done anything to the website.
No, I know. But are those maps now available?
So I think what we need to do is print the GIS map to PDF and then replace the ones that are on the website. Or, or there's some better ways we can provide a link that might be-
A link would be fine. Just, I was looking for something today, and I'm like, holy moly, these are really all-
And there had been discussion on some clarity and bringing maybe two subjects closer as far as reading rather than on page one and page three, but that's something, I know we're gonna be looking at.
Is that possible to attach? As far as property owners? Is that what you're trying to-
No. It was on, I was looking on the Daniel website, looking for a specific parcel with the owner, and the owner that was listed hadn't lived here for a long time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And maybe that would add it on the, you know, tax.
The county would, but did you refer to our portion as far as-
Daniel Town now.
So who knows what?
That will be out of date until we get a opinion.
Well, I don't doubt that for a minute, but it'll be better in 10 years old.
Both statements are true.
Might be easier for us to just change today.
We'll look at that and discuss that.
So much, thank you.
And we are looking at building a new map. DO is building a map of land use that we can put in with our general plan that will overlap. And then, you saw the map that Mountain Land Association of Governments, we did with the outlook of potential increase in residents, businesses?
I'm hyped up, I don't remember.
We have that map too. We probably oughta go ahead, but I don't know if you want that on the website. It's probably more confusing than anything.
A lot of discussion on which maps are the best maps to-
Just to bring clarity, give more of a town you'd like and the parcels.
Understood. Any questions or comments? Item number two, which would be a disconnect request by Natur Enterprises LLC. Would you please offer the opportunity, if one of them is here, to have any other questions or comments they'd like to say about that request? Not, I'll turn the time over to council for any comments with regards to their boss.
Chip, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move for a denial of the request based on the following and other items brought forth in the preceding hearings and public comment, whether electronic or other means. The request, if granted, could lead to haphazard zoning and overlapping functions of government and could unnecessarily place a larger burden on the taxpayers. The Culinary Water Authority has not responded in detail or substance. The property lies within a special service district area. There has been no application for services outside of what the property has historically been provided. The request is lacking premature analysis deficient. The standard of review has not been met, in my opinion. See, compelling countervailing public interest could be jeopardized if granted. The pub, the property has been included in the general plan, land use plan, zoning, and ongoing long-range planning associated with overall community sense of belonging, municipality's identity, and future well-being. The property lies contiguous to the town and in fact a main corridor to the entrance of Daniel, which has limited entrances, therefore cutting off access to guide planning. The property is one or two, of two entrances into Daniel directly off the Highway 40 corridor, those impeding the future long-range planning and the economic future of Daniel Town. The town has spent considerable time planning in cooperation with other municipalities, and UDOT to preserve the highway and has planned entrances according with the public's interest in mind. This request, if granted, would in effect undo the cooperation agreement signed by these parties. The disconnect would create an island of unincorporated land, and no map was attached to the second application.
Thank you. Here's a second.
Second.
First and a second. Any last discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to item number three, very similar disconnect request by Mary Jo Coleman. Turn the time over to you. Have any thing you'd like to say or comment as regards to that?
I wanna hear what you guys have decided, and then I'll make a comment.
Love to do that after too, when you're going to time, if you've just come up for- Any discussion amongst the council?
So this is, this is a piece where part of it's in the county and part of it's in Daniel, right?
There's a road access into the packet that the government given us, and John, that somebody's looked at some things and has some words to reference that, so. So the chair will entertain a motion if there's no discussion.
Could I make a comment about that right now?
Not right now.
Okay.
One more time, if that. Chair will entertain a motion.
With my permission, I have a request for a disconnect. Probably be good for anybody concerned here, but. The request, if granted, could lead to haphazard zoning and overlapping function of government could unnecessarily place a larger burden on the taxpayers. Property immediately east owned by the same trust is being served by Daniel Municipal Water and provides private protection water to this parcel, which is also located in the Daniel Town popper. A disconnect on the parcel would not remove all the trust poppers. There has been no application for services or zoning outside of what has been historically divided to this parcel. The request is lacking premature analysis deficient. Standard review has not been met. See Harriman City versus Draper City. Compelling, countervailing public interest would be jeopardized if granted. The property has been included in the general plan, land use plan, zoning, and ongoing long-range planning associated with overall community sense of belonging, economic stability, municipal identity, and future well-being. The property lies within the town, within the Daniel Town as incorporated, dated 2006. Boundary established through cooperation with Wasatch County officials and the county council, with a feasibility study conducted prior to the incorporation, and this disconnect may jeopardize the study and the feasibility of Daniel Town. The property is currently located in an industrial zone and may inhibit future transportation corridors and service areas, if the request is granted. The town has spent considerable time and resources hiring cooperation with joining municipalities to keep the community at the boundaries, and this disconnect would inhibit these interlocal agreements with cooperation efforts. This disconnect would enlarge an island of unincorporated land in Wasatch County.
Is there a motion? Do we have a second?
I accept the motion.
We have a second. Any last discussion amongst the council? None?
So, so it seems like there could be some, I can understand the issue of having property in two different, in two different municipalities. It seems like we can hopefully work through some of those issues and-
Both.
And make progress.
Okay.
That'd be my understanding also.
Okay. We have a first and a second. We had that discussion. We have understanding. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
My name's Scott Coleman, you probably know that. The reason that we are in Daniel is unbeknownst to me, because when we bought the property, every bit of it was in Wasatch County. You guys has taken it upon yourself to annex our ground in without ever notifying anybody, that five acres, however many acres it is from the house to the front of my shop door, without ever notifying any of us. There would be no problem if you guys had let things alone. You, you guys has started this, not us. We were happy, being his neighbors. We don't wanna be part of your town. What makes you think you have the right to tell me where my ground can be and what I can do with it? When you had no control over it whatsoever, and you've done everything without ever notifying, which I, I'd aim the lawyer, but I'm pretty sure is illegal. Now what have you got to say about that?
I would say I'm sorry you feel that way. I would think that there may or may not be some understanding with that road, on Daniel's road, the road going through and zoning and what happened and why did they shit or shouldn't have done things. So I, I know you feel a certain way, and I get it. We as a town, I don't believe, we, not one person here, took your Daniel ground and brought it in. It was all in that boundary that was done by the county that gave us that boundary.
No. You're wrong.
Okay, and I-
The five, the, the almost five acres wasn't, but the piece on the front wasn't.
I'm not gonna debate that, because I don't know the actual, those, those, I just know the timing and what generally happened when the town became, was formed. There may be particulars that you're aware about, and I'm not aware about.
I wasn't aware of any of this till I showed up at your meeting and whatnot. You guys never bothered informing us.
Been 10 years.
No, not about that. Not, not 10 years ago, you didn't annex the front of my shop. When you guys created your town, the county, I don't know, you and the county took the 4.9 acres or whatever, but everything out in front was still county. And now all of a sudden on the map, we're now in Daniels. Now who did that?
Well, I thought a lot.
I sure as hell didn't.
I tried to tell you once, and I think that, so I said, there was a person from the county who drew the boundary of this town and asked if we were satisfied, and then we went around two different times and certified it with the individuals and the residents of the town. That's all I can tell you. I don't know who talked to you, didn't sign something.
Nobody talked to us.
I understand. I understand what you're saying, and I can understand if you didn't think that, that you'd be pretty hot about it. I get that.
I think it's pretty, I think it's illegal, isn't it?
You know, I certainly wouldn't say that, because I don't know the particulars that you're saying that you did and didn't do.
Well, any person, any person I've talked to said it's illegal. So I guess you guys have started this.
I, I don't quite know what we started yet, but I understand your feelings and what you said.
You, you called down the thunder. I hope you're ready for the story. Do all I can say.
Didn't expect or call any thunder that I thought of. I thought I'd explain something to you.
Oh, you ain't explaining nothing to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, Modern Income Housing Plan, Mountain Land Association of Governments. Bob Allen would be here to check that.
Thank you. So, maybe, since I haven't been here before, maybe introduce myself, who I am. I know Eric and the mayor know who I am. I'm a planner with Mountain Land Association of Governments. You guys are a part of our organization. You probably know who that is. I'm a certified planner. I've done a bunch of general plan work for cities all over our area. And mayor reached out to me and said, apparently we need to have a general affordable housing plan. And I know that there was, there's some confusion on that as part of the application, so. Anyways, I think, long story short, it's probably time for the town to have a modern income housing plan. Let me briefly, it's really important, I think, to explain what a moderate income housing plan is, so people don't get too sideways with it, because it's really easy to. The state says that every city has to have a moderate income housing plan, and if you look up, you're technically big enough now, I guess you'd be, you're supposed to be a city, I guess.
I might have read that a little bit with you.
You could. That's fine, that's fine, but according to the census data and the way the state does it, that's what they say. But anyways, the, but, and I probably would have advised you even as a town, you probably should put together a portable housing plan, just because a lot of applications ask whether you have or not. The thing is, is the state asks that you have a plan, and that's it. They don't say that you have to have X amount. They don't say that you have to do anything to build more. You just have to have a plan that reasonably allows the opportunity for affordable housing in your community. Okay? So that's the first thing to really understand. You've gotta have a plan. That's what they said. Now, moderate income housing, according to the state, and it's in this, in my version, and I'm assuming it's in your version as well, Eric, but essentially, affordable housing is housing that is affordable to people that make 80% of the median income for the county. So for you guys right now, the median income for Wasatch County is about 70-something thousand. So we're, to understand, we're not talking about the lowest of low income, and we're talking about people that make 70-ish thousand dollars. It's a pretty good living for a lot of people. So anyways, the plan, the plan requires, and I'm gonna hand out this, I don't know, Eric, did you have, do you have copies of what you did, and we could go through it together, or what do you want to do?
Yeah, let's, I think we just look at yours and then-
Let you-
And then I'll just, I'm trying to pass them down.
Yeah, here, I'll give it to you. Can I? I don't need your copies.
You might.
I've got, I got digital.
Okay, so this is what you've prepared prior to this evening?
Yes, this is what I prepared prior to this evening, and there's extra copies of people in this audience.
Is it 70,000 for single income or dual income?
Total household income. So, the other thing that the state code does is it says that your affordable housing plan has to have five things in it. And if you look through this plan, and maybe we'll just briefly go through this, and we don't have to read it word for word, but I'll let you know what it has in here. If you go down, it says, you'll see that first list that's got A, B, C, and D. So this is what a document the affordable housing plan has to have in it. An estimate of the existing supply of moderate income housing located within the city, so an estimate of how much affordable housing is in the city now. Two, an estimate for the need for moderate income housing for the city in the next five years. So how much do we have now? How much do we think we're gonna need in five years from now? A survey of total residential land use. This is essentially just saying, just identifying what zoning, what zones we have available. Four, an evaluation of how existing land uses and zones affect the opportunity for moderate income housing. So how does, what effect of zoning and other things that the city does, how does it affect whether somebody could live here or not? And then E, the last one, the fifth one, is a description of the city's program to encourage an adequate supply of moderate income housing. So what I did is I took a, I put a brief draft together for the city. There's some things that don't fit for your city, specifically the survey of residential lands, land use. I didn't have your zoning code at hand, but Eric can take care of that just as easily as I can. So the first, so if you move on, it says moderate income housing defined, that's just basically the definition of what our out-income housing is. You'll see the table on the second page, it's just monthly housing costs in Daniel Town. Granted, you're gonna look at this number, and you're gonna say, well, that, that's my way mine is. These are, this is data that's picked up on a national level, so you kinda have to step back and blur your eyes and say, well, this is the data that they have available. Otherwise, really to get some of this information, we have to knock on just about everybody's door and say, how much money do you make? How much do you pay for your house? You know, and nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna help us out with that. It's, I, I will, I will admit, my frustration with this whole process is the state requires these numbers that are actually really quite difficult to come up with. And so you just kinda have to take it with a grain of salt a little bit. We, they understand you're trying to get it in the ballpark as close as you can, and that's what we're gonna do. But if you think we're gonna get it right on, we know exactly how much there is and exactly how much there needs to be, yeah, don't, don't even go there. It's not gonna happen, right? So this is just some information about housing affordability. So the, really where the rubber meets the road is the, is where it starts with housing supply on page two. And in here we said, according to the American Community Survey, Daniel has about 358 housing units and about 96.5 occupancy rate. So that's basic enough. Single-family dwelling units constituted the majority of housing stock. I took a guess on that. Do you have multifamily housing in Daniel?
A, a little bit.
A little bit, so I got it right?
Yeah.
You may wanna, Eric, if I just email you this, I'll let you maybe fill in what you wanna do, but there you go. The town is relatively distant to major employment centers and institutions of higher learning and transit routes, when compared to other cities dampening the demand for higher density housing. There's just, Daniels is off the beaten path enough that it's just, there's not a huge demand to put apartments there, right? Or other things like that.
Yay, correct. That's why we live here.
Please, please understand, I'm not pushing anything, I'm just helping you get-
It's breaking me out, I just put that forward.
Get the plan done, right? So, if you look over on the next page, starting on the next page, these little blue bar charts, and I know you can't read them, because the place that, at the state that they give you this information, they're, the model that they were using, it just, I couldn't make it look good, so I will work on making it look good and more viewable. But I want you really quickly to look at those two charts and look, the first one at the top. So what they do is they break down moderate income housing for 80%. We talked about that, the median income. So the top three colors, green, yellow, and red, are all households making 0 to 80% of median income. This is what their data is telling us. Their data is saying, in green, there are 35 households living in the town of Daniel that meet that income qualification. Does that make sense? The yellow, number 44, is saying there are 44 units that would be available, that are affordable to that cross-section of people. Does that make sense? So we have 35 people that want it, and we have 44 housing units, right?
So we're there.
So you're good, yeah. The problem is, is the red number. And this is where you're a little bit different than most cities that I've come across. You only actually have 24 units available because people that make more, people that are, make more than the group that are in green are living in the houses that are, would meet a more affordable. Does that make sense? So essentially, you have an excess of nine, but you really have, you're really technically short 11, if that makes sense.
If I could, how'd they split, how'd they find that particular?
They go-
Okay.
No. In reality, the, through the census data, there's census information, there's American Community Survey, there's so many different, different batches of information out there. And what they're doing is they're trying, again, like I said, this is a hard number to come to. They're kind of trying to gather as much information as they can and smash it together to a point where it comes up with a number that's somewhat in the ballpark.
I think most of us are in that pole.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Income bracket.
You know, and don't look a gift horse in the mouth, is, right? So the next, the next view, the next part of that is, the next green, yellow, and red, I know it's, it's hard to read, and I'm gonna work on fixing that. It's the same thing, but it's for everybody up to 50% of the median income. So these are people that are making quite a bit less than the median income, probably around the 50 to 45 to 50,000 dollars a year kind of range. There, they're saying you have 20 households that make that much money, you have 24 units that are affordable to them, but we actually have a deficit of 12 in that situation. And then the extremely low, these are 30%, they say you have 10 households that make that amount, you have four units that would be available to them, and you don't have a problem on that one. Yes, and I'll try and answer it. I'll-
It almost seems like, once you start on this, you're always chasing, you gotta keep that.
You absolutely are, which is why the state wants you to update this every two years. And they are doing better at, at providing the information to help you update it, but again, like I said, it's kind of a number that's hard to chase, like you're saying. So with that, I, what I put in, what I wrote in is kind of my summary of that, and your summary of your current situation is, where it says, the 2018 gap analysis for Daniel Town, and I quoted it, because this is, the guy that's gonna look at your plan is the guy that did that analysis, so we're quoting you, here you go. Shows that the town already has more affordable housing units than the total number of moderate income households. However, many of these units are currently occupied by those that do not qualify as moderate income households. Therefore, the town's current need for additional affordable housing units for those making 0 to 8% AVI is currently 11. We're, we're short.
So.
Or technically, sorry for, I'll, I'll get back to you. Or technically, if we could just build 11 more units, normal housing prices, and tell those people that are living in affordable housing units that shouldn't be, shouldn't be, get out and buy a house, then you're good too. Yeah, but please, go ahead.
Okay, so my comment is, everybody that's below that, that 80%,
Sure.
That's in one of these houses that are not being included, we need to voice that and get that in there, so that the town already has-
Yeah. Good, that's a good thing. Yeah, and I would say the vast majority of households in your community are owner-occupied, meaning people own their house, right? And this number does not take that into account, because as I talked to the guy at the state even just today, he said, really the focus is on rent, rentals, because renters is where we make the biggest difference for the people that are actually out looking for housing. Does that make sense? So I 100% appreciate where you're coming from, and I agree with you. The problem is, is I don't have that number, and I don't know if we could come up with that number very easily.
So maybe we, as a town, should-
Well, and, and I think we can, we can speak to that, maybe without a number, but just speak to it textually, saying, yeah, the majority of households are that way. By saying that, though, you're not necessarily helping yourself out. Being able to show that you're covering everybody is actually a good thing, right? So anyways, so I came up with the number that, I took the number that they have and says, okay, 11's the number that we're short, okay? Now, so that was requirement number one. What's our, what are we estimating our current demand is? And our current demand is 11. Now you go down to the next part, it says five-year moderate income housing need. According to the 2016 American Community Survey, Daniel's population actually decreased by 23 people. I bet you didn't know that. From 2020 to 2016-
They actually grabbed 26 people out of town, and you missed them.
They actually grabbed twenty-six people out of town, and you missed them.
Oh, okay. So I say, so I say with a relatively stable population over the past six years, it's reasonable to expect that the demand for new affordable housing units by twenty-twenty-three will remain at eleven. If we're staying stagnant, the demand is pretty much gonna stay stagnant as well, right? So that's requirement number two.
Solution.
To identify that.
Yeah, to identify those two things. The next portion is the survey of residential zoning and its impact on housing opportunities. So the next section does not apply to your community, I grabbed it out of another city's, and I dumped it in there so you know, but I figure Eric, you can look at it and take your zoning and say, okay, we have the, what, an R-one zone, and an R-five zone, and an R-whatever zone, and this is the densities for them, and basically, this is what they're about. And that's all you need to put in there, right? Just kind of based off of what's in there, you can just plug in your own information. And I'm happy to help you do that, I just didn't have access to the actual information. And this, and then it continues on to the next page where the multifamily residential district. If you have multifamily, do you have a multifamily zoning?
We don't have a zoning there.
So everybody's grandfather does.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll let you deal with that how you will, but that'll come into play in just a minute.
Okay.
So fill that in, and then when it comes to Daniel's planning commission, this is where I want you to start paying attention, because this is where we're kinda starting to lay the groundwork for what we're saying our plan is gonna be. Does that make sense? Daniel's planning commission and the city council hold one of the most important keys to providing housing opportunities for persons of moderate income. The key the city holds is zoning. However, many other factors contribute to the affordability of housing that cannot be controlled by the city. Land prices, construction material, interest rates, and other financing costs can significantly influence housing costs. By working cooperatively with the state, county agencies, Daniel can ensure affordable housing for its, to its history. So that's where I'm kinda saying, okay, we acknowledge that we have zoning power, but zoning is not the silver bullet to make affordable housing easy, right? There's so many other costs and so many other issues, so that's where I'm trying to lay the groundwork there. Low-income households making fifty percent of median income, which will typically be renters, may be affected by zoning, but may also be impacted by market conditions beyond the control of the city. Households making thirty percent will more than likely need government rental assistance in addition, in addition to zoning assistance from the city. And that's something that the state takes care of and so on and so forth. So that's us, that's our analysis of what the zoning, your zoning you have and, and how we've analyzed it, what we've pointed out by it, okay? I try to be really non-committal, really generic, because nobody wants to be super-committal with this, I'm just enough to get you passed, and that's good enough.
As a plan.
Okay.
Do you have, how, it is very simplistic, but you've got affordable housing up on the mountain over there, that's three hundred fifty grand, we didn't talk about eight dollars. Can you even throw a dart out to tell me what affordable housing in this valley is?
Affordable housing in this valley? Well, we could
You got the seventy thousand income, but what about the cost of that?
Yeah, so, so essentially, it's easy to do, if you take seventy thousand, someone that makes seventy thousand, and you take how much they make per month, so you divide that by, and so it'll probably end up being around five-ish thousand dollars, five or six thousand dollars. And then you say, okay, according to this code, housing costs need to be thirty percent or less of their total monthly income, and if they is, then they are living in housing that's affordable to them. So thirty percent of five thousand is around twelve, thirteen, fourteen hundred. So all your housing costs per month are around fourteen hundred dollars, then that's affordable housing, okay? And so
And that's different for every community, because they're
It's different for everybody, it's different for every community, but that number is based off of the county. And, and that's one place that you kind of benefit, is the county number is really high, and you guys are probably a little bit lower than the county, so most of the people, you're showing that you're covering yourselves, right? It's the midways of the world that are like, you know, how do you show that you're having affordable housing there, right? Or Park City, for example, right? So, yeah.
Will you clarify all of your housing costs? I mean, you're just not talking like your mortgage, P-I-T-I, you're talking
Mortgage, insurance, and your, and your
Taxes.
Taxes, your utilities, it's supposed to have everything in there. Yeah.
Isn't this also rental income?
Um, yeah, rental income, I mean, it all just, really, it just depends on how much your parents spend on housing, and if you pay so much in rent and all your utilities are included in there, then that's your number.
So, so if your housing costs are substantially more than that, and you're making about eighty percent or below, then you can apply for state assistance?
I, I don't know if I would say that. The funny thing, the, the hard part about this is, is we're in a current, we're in an economy where, I'll take me for example, I bought my house at the rock bottom, two thousand eight, when it was great time to be a buyer and not a seller. And so I bought a house that, I mean, there's no way on earth I could even come close to affording to pay for my, buy my house now. And I think a lot of people in the town, especially like yours, where it's, it's not, there's not a huge turnover, that's the way it is. I bought my house ten, twenty years ago, and it was very affordable to me then, but the value of my house has gone up so much, there's no way I could buy it again, right?
It was scary then, though, if you remember.
Oh, it was scary.
We gonna make it?
It was my first house, and we were, we were sweating.
Yeah, I hear ya.
Taking it to the holders.
Yeah, exactly.
I've got another question.
Please.
Is the state trying to facilitate Bush apartment complexes?
No. The big thing is, is, and I think most of the people here probably recognize is that the state of Utah, we actually have a problem with housing, and it's been a problem for quite some time. I mean, the school districts and people that, or fire departments, well, the county, for example, they just tried to hire, or hiring two people as planners. And you know, they're making, they're probably about in this eighty percent range, but finding some, finding people that could, will do that and can still, can live up here, afford to live up here, it's a problem. And it's not just Wasatch County, it's lots of places where there's lots of, there's lots of people that wanna live here and are making decent wages and, but they still just, the housing market, there's just so few houses that are being built that are in that affordable price range, that it's becoming a problem. People are having a hard time finding employees that can work and stay here.
I know, just down in Salt Lake, from, what?
Twenty-first South, Seventeenth South, down to Forty-eight Hundred South or so, on West
Temple and that, I mean, there's just huge apartment complexes, after apartment complexes.
There are.
All along the tracks line.
Yeah, it's along the tracks lines.
And you'd be surprised how expensive those are.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the thing, they're not pushing, they're not pushing apartments, but, but multifamily housing, well, it, it's kind of one of the ways that you get around it, right? And so, and they're, they're, I don't think they have an agenda as far as specific housing types, or, they just want to help the economy out by saying, hey, we've got all these jobs, we want people to be able to take these, take on these jobs and have a place that they can afford to live, right? Like, if I wanted to be a cop or a nurse or a teacher up here in Wasatch County, I mean, if I worked for Wasatch County, I, and I made my current salary, I probably couldn't afford it. I'd buy a house, my office is right at the Mountain Canyon, I'd buy a house tomorrow in Wasatch County if I could afford it, right? But it's just expensive. And so that's the problem they're trying to grapple with. I will admit that I feel like the state is kind of taking an inch and trying to go ten miles with it in some ways, but as far as an agenda for apartments or anything like that, I don't think they have that agenda at all.
Is it, is it something to tend to force towns and cities or individuals that plain just don't make that kind of money to, to buy into it, and they're getting, I want assistance?
I don't think so.
Promoting that?
I don't think so, I think it's more, it's mostly, they have a problem, and they're trying to, and it's a really tough problem to fix, and they're looking at any way they can to fix the problem. As far as government housing assistance and things like that, that's, that's kind of beyond my knowledge of it, but I don't think they're really out there pushing and promoting that. They would love people to just be able to afford to buy the house and live in it, right? That's ultimately what they wanna do. The, and as far as forcing the cities to do anything, at this juncture, for years, I could say absolutely, and at this juncture, I still feel pretty confident about that, there's really nothing they can force you to do other than have a plan. Remember we said in the first, you just gotta have a plan, and you've gotta be relatively, you gotta be relatively, you can't, you can't just be blatant, yeah, we put this plan together, but there's no way, we don't care about affordable housing and, you know, it's gotta be reasonable. As long as you're reasonable and you've fulfilled their requirements of the things that you have in there, as far as my understanding, at this juncture, you're gonna be okay.
Saw a question, saw if people've got some acreage, trying to bring in a travel trailer and let a, let a family live in that, and for, pretty cheap rent.
That's a local city code.
I was just gonna say, do you think the state's gonna come and tell us what to do with our zoning?
Yeah, they're not, they're not.
So I have a question, this, this is a county thing.
Do you say your name, for, for meeting purposes and for minutes, can you say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, Samantha Moll, M-O-L-L. I just have a question, it's a county thing, right? And Daniel's not a median?
It's a city thing, it's a city and county thing. State law, state law says, if you are a town, we encourage you to have one, but if you are a city, which they define as over a thousand people, you must do one.
So you're telling us we gotta cut back the population once we're out?
Well, that's Earth's department, so I'll let him deal with that.
I have a question.
Please.
I'm Mary Devlin. A lot of moderate income housing is part of a development group, and we don't anticipate that that's gonna happen in Daniel because of the zoning. But our code doesn't allow for it now, but if it did, would something like a mother-in-law apartment, or a caretaker cottage?
Yeah.
Or a garage apartment, would those qualify?
That's, that's the low-hanging fruit, that for a town like you, if you're okay with it, that's one of the first things that I would say, that's the low-paying, easy fruit if you're, I know that's a touchy subject, but instead of building, I think a lot of people would say, instead of building a fourplex or an Eplex or housing apartments, they'd say, well, why don't we just allow accessory dwelling units? And when you're only talking eleven units that you need, you could probably pick those up pretty quickly that way.
We may already have some of them, except we don't know about.
Exactly.
Well, and a mother-in-law apartment, especially in the town, I don't know if it qualifies, because what we have in our code says it has to be within the dwelling.
Right.
But those still, those still can
Those still can.
That was my question, would that
Sure.
So that's allowed here?
Inside the dwellings, which are asking for the money.
As long, I, what, what they would
Any other rental units that's attached to the property would
Essentially, I think the way affordable housing people, the state, whoever's gonna be the police of this, or whoever defines it, I don't know. But whoever, if, they, they don't care if it is a mother-in-law apartment, a housing complex, condominiums, a high-rise skyscraper, they don't care, as long as there are, as long as there are housing that is affordable to somebody else. I would say, in what I, how I would help you define it, is if, like most accessory dwelling units, their big thing is, is can you, can you build them utility, build them separately with utilities, right? If you can say, okay, we can build a house, the apartment for so much, and the rest of the house for this so much, that's kind of the general way you can do it. But as long as it's, like, they have a kitchen, they have their own kitchen, their own bathroom, their own bedroom, and it's rentable, and it meets your code, that's, that's an affordable housing unit. And if it's affordable, right, you could do that, and it could be the Taj Mahal, and it wouldn't be affordable, right? So anyways, moving on so we can be done, because I don't wanna take up too much of your time. So one thing that they, he pointed out is he's like, be heavy with the goals and policies and things like that. I have mixed feelings about that, but I have down some here that I would maybe just have you consider in there. They are on the very last page. The vision of a moderate income housing plan, this is your, this is your plan for moderate income housing, is to ensure an adequate supply of safe, accessible, sanitary, and aesthetically pleasing moderate income housing, integrated throughout the city in various locations and consistent with the needs of all segments of the population. Very generic, sounds lovely, you know, there's fireworks going off in the background, right? And then basic goals, develop a mixture of lot sizes and housing types within the community. So that's something, you know, that's something up to you to think about, do we wanna look at maybe half, half-acre units or something like that, whatever you guys decide to do. Review development fees to understand whether they could be waived for affordable housing units. So if somebody said, came in and said, hey, I wanna build an accessory unit, right? And just, are you looking at your impact fees, development fees, and you're saying, okay, is it, is it so expensive for us to do that, that it's just not worth, somebody's gonna say, it's just not worth it, right? And if, if you don't depend so much on those fees for something that small, maybe you could consider waiving that in that situation. That's kind of what we're saying. Again, take it under consideration, just, I don't know what your impact, what the development fees, like, Lehigh where I live, I think the impact fees, all the development fees is about like twenty grand per a lot, or maybe even a little bit more than that now. So I don't know what yours are, but maybe look at that and say, okay, can we waive some of these if somebody's coming in and saying, we wanna have something that's affordable for people, for my kids, or for the missionaries, or whoever, right?
So ours are based on the estimate of, of how much the house is gonna cost.
Sure.
So it comes down thoroughly in control, how it's affected.
Yeah, see, there you go. Yeah, that helps, and you can look at it and just say, we've done that, right? Three, encourage landlords with affordable units to ensure tenants meet moderate income housing levels. Again, that's not a law you're gonna make, but you know, if you're talking to people or somebody comes in and wants to do that, you say, okay, if you're doing this in affordable, this is my number one thing. I hate it when people wanna come in and say, hey, we wanna build apartments because you need affordable housing. And in reality, they're gonna go for way more money, right? And so that's where, especially if someone, especially if someone came in and said, we wanna build something in the name of affordable housing, my first answer would be, fine, but each one of those needs to be deed restricted so that they can only be rented or purchased by someone that meets the housing, housing requirements. And you absolutely can do that, and it apps, it a lot of times will make them rethink, right? And so you just kinda, but you just, you don't have to be hard about it, but just say, hey, that's, that's your problem, you've got lots of units, you just have people living in them that shouldn't be, so keep them
At the end of the day, we have eleven units for a hundred years, is there a problem?
No.
Okay.
So the rest of that, so Mayor summarized it perfectly, read the rest, take it, do with this what you will, if you think it sucks, that's fine, I take criticism for a living, so you can
I was not criticizing
No, I know that, I know that, I know that. What I'm saying is, is I'm here to facilitate your plan, I've given you some recommendations, the information basically that you're gonna need to at least get a passing grade. And I'm saying, take it and do with it what you will, let Eric work his magic, whatever you, and I'm happy to help in any future ways necessary to help you do this, but hopefully I've got you ninety percent of the way there, and let you take it from here, and if you need any more information, please, you guys know how to get in touch with me.
I'll just open up a can of worms.
Are there any questions, concerns?
So, well, mine is gonna say, so we need to have this, for other reasons, at January thirty first.
Okay, yeah. Yes, so what my recommendation would be, let Eric take it, or whoever, give Eric your feedback, let, and I'll send you the digital copy of this, Eric.
Okay.
Let you take it, take yours, marry them however you want, and then you just send a draft to the planning commission. So understand, this is part of your general a draft to the planning commission, so understand this is part of your general plan and therefore it needs to be treated like a general plan amendment, which means it has to have a public hearing before the planning commission, a noted, a notice public hearing, you've done those before, and then it just has to be adopted in a regular town council meeting after it's been recommended, right? That's the process. And you should, I mean, you got two, three months to take care of that and I'm here to help you in any ways to get that done.
We're right now just reviewing the general plan, so this is perfect timing.
Yeah.
Perfect. So, we're right in the middle of that. And I think, this is awesome.
Okay.
This is awesome, I think if we plug in like the survey of residential zoning and these are the two that I had, this one's off the Woodland Hills and this one's off the Midway. So, if we just plug that in, to, to where, what you have here, because obviously you don't know the zoning.
Yeah.
So, don't, that, see what you think of that.
Yeah. I, I, I've looked at these and I think you're good. If you're, if you're going to do that, then I think you should be fine.
I mean, because I don't have, I don't have the graph and everything that you've got in this document that makes it so awesome.
Uh-huh.
And I think this is great, I love this document, isn't it? Yeah. And it's, and it's almost exactly what I have drafted with the Daniel number, that's what I just handed him with, but I didn't do the math on the eleven houses.
It's hard to find out.
Yeah, yeah, I brought my calculator, Kate and John wanted to get in on that.
So, so Eric, is there something that you need me to do from this point forward or?
Well, do you want to, do you want to marry those or do you want me to marry those? And then, are you gonna clean up this, you said you was gonna clean up the...
So, what I'll do, let me email you, let me email you the document and I'm gonna let you marry them, because there's that little and you're already working on your plan, I'll let you do that. And then, you can, ultimately, you can use it as is, it's just the labeling overlaps and it looks, that's, you know, and I can work on that, that's not something that needs to be fixed before you even adopt it, right? I can be working with, but I'll be on that, working on it and I'll send you those images as soon as I get them. So, you can take this and move forward and not, don't, don't wait for me.
Okay.
Take your information, marry it in there and just full steam ahead and if you run into a hiccup, give me a call and I'll see what I can do. And then, in the interim, I'll be trying to get that fixed for you.
Okay, and then if, that was my second question, what kind of time are we looking at from your office? If I have more time, I can certainly do that, so...
I, I am actually swamped, so that's why I was hoping you'd be willing to...
Then I'm here to help you.
Thank you. Eric, I knew you'd say that.
So, one thing that you should be aware of though, you're probably not aware, is the other side of the highway, we have A-one zoning, so we have one acre zoning on the other side of the highway that goes up quite a bit.
Yep.
And then, we have, this, this developer just came in and we reviewed it, they're looking at disconnecting from, uh, another municipality and coming in with mixed-use developments. We got some commercial and then one acre lots and up and around.
Okay.
And so, that was looked at on the other side of the highway, so that certainly is a tool to fit within this plan.
Sure, absolutely. Just depending, and again, you just gotta look at how much the houses cost, right? Because if you build half-million dollar homes, you're not helping yourself out.
See, and I didn't, I didn't know about the deed restriction thing, I...
Well, and, and I'm not necessarily saying you have to do it that way, I mean, again, there's nothing sacred about that number eleven where you have to make it happen.
Right.
So, if it, if it creates a problem for the development, I don't know if I would make, make a big heart, make a big heartburn about it, but, uh, just, you know, take that for what it's worth and, and move forward with it.
Okay.
But yeah, if they're building, a great way would be say, hey, are you building those houses, do any of them have accessory dwelling units, you know, would any of you willing to build those into the homes? And if you did that, you'd be in pretty good shape.
Yeah, and they, and they talked about having some in the commercial.
Yeah.
Some residential units up in there, so...
If you're willing to do that, that's an easy way to just eat up that eleven, you can say, look, we just, that way you can tell the state, look, we just approved a whole bunch of apartments as part of a mixed use and then fireworks go off in their office and everybody's happy.
Okay, awesome. Great, if you have a chance to review that, you see any red flags, hit me an email.
I will.
And then, we'll just move forward with that.
Yes, and I'm going to, before I even leave, Eric, which one is the right address? Because I have a couple of email addresses.
Mary Booker in Daniel, Utah.
Okay. I will, I'm gonna email to you this.
Thank you so much. This is awesome, I love it.
So, so the other concern I have, on the flip side of this, is our general plan does have many things with property values, right?
Uh-huh.
And, and to many, that's probably more important with an offering equal.
Very unrecognizable.
Low-income housing, so...
Yeah, um, that is definitely a consideration. I think, I think one thing you gotta keep in the back of your mind is, is typically the number of affordable housing units we're talking about and, and depending on the way you do it, it actually typically won't affect affordable housing units or affect property values, in fact, sometimes like if you had an accessory dwelling unit in a home, that actually raises the value of that property. The, the big thing that people are concerned about, in my opinion and in my, my experience, is they're concerned about the nuisances that people think of when it comes to affordable housing. And most of those nuisances tend to be around like the big housing apartment complexes where you got, um, cars parked everywhere and somebody's, you know, swapping a transmission out on front of the street and things like that. So, I, I, a hundred percent...
I don't know what you're talking about, man.
I've never heard of that. But, but a reasonable goal for us might be to have eleven in the red, right?
You...
If, if we feel we're comfortable where we're at now, maybe that's a reasonable goal for us.
So... Turn off the camera, no, I'm just kidding.
He has a boss.
I wouldn't say that as in the plan, right? Because if you say, we're okay with having a shortage and you tell the state, we're okay with having a shortage, then they're gonna, they're gonna get at, not get after you, but they're gonna say, well, why is that, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna...
Do you believe in the market and let the market decide?
Well, amen, brother, but that's...
That's really the deciding factor.
Yeah, but it really is.
What is a landlord?
And, and, and in reality, you can be fine with the eleven, but I wouldn't state it, right? People, because like all the affordable federal and state affordable housing laws, especially federal ones, you're not gonna get in trouble if you're just doing business, normal business, but if you do things that say, we're out in the open saying, hey, we are doing things to make sure affordable housing can't be in town, then you actually can be sued and liable for that. So, that's why I a hundred percent agree with what you're saying and I know what you're saying, but my radar goes off and I have to say, okay, you gotta be cautious about how you talk about that and deal with that. Because in reality, most of, in, in the town of Daniels, I would assume ninety percent of the affordable housing that is needed are people that were like, you know, my son that just got married needs a place to live and I don't want him to live in my house, I'd love to have him live in an apartment or in the basement or something like that. Or, you know, my, my grandma's, my, my mother-in-law's come, needs to move in, but we can't, we don't want her to live in our house, but we can't afford to...
Take your son?
Yeah, we can't, we can't afford to buy her a house or rent or something else, that's, that's kind of typically the demand in a town like Daniels that I was assuming you're trying to meet, so...
Yeah, historically, we're just different than most municipalities, so...
At, at least in your little region, you are. You're probably closer to Waltsburg than just by any of the others. Waltsburg's actually probably a little bit more expensive in a lot of ways than you guys are, so...
Thank you, this is all...
Thanks, guys.
Yes, I really appreciate it.
I've spent more time than I probably should have, but I hope I answered all the questions you have. And again, please, don't ever hesitate to call or send me an email and I'll try and do what I can do. Feel the support you give us. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just gonna hand these out, this has the information from the Daniel.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't have the numbers, ignore the numbers, take the numbers off what Bob just gave you. So, this just has the information from the Daniel rewritten, this one was modeled after Midway.